Hi, good evening everyone. We're gonna open up the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, June 13th. Present are Selectmen Robert Jones, Selectwoman Lisa Pacico, myself, Paul Sadik. This fellow here is Jack Healy, our time administrator, and our administrative assistant, Ally Goss. She takes the minutes. Is there anybody other than FreeCam that's recording the meeting? Before we proceed any further, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the people that were killed down in Orlando and think about them and their families. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we've got a couple of things on the agenda tonight. I don't think it's gonna be a real long meeting, but first one of this Charlie Stockwell, he's our IT software specialist and handles his work at the town hall, and I believe at the police station and fire station. So Charlie, you've got a presentation for us regarding problems that we're having at the town hall.
Well, basically, we're having issues with too much spam coming in, viruses. Unfortunately, it's a lot of them are coming in of the ransomwares, ones that have hit the different towns and organizations. So what we're looking to do is try to greatly reduce that in the most cost-effective way we can do it without having another employee stuck sitting there monitoring either software or getting to a point where we have to have a very restrictive firewall set up like we have at the police department. So we're looking to get a subscription to the AVAS software. It's $450 for three years, and that will be installed directly on the exchange server, and it will monitor the emails as they come in on the server level before it actually even hits the people's exchange email boxes, basically filtering out as much as it can possibly do. AVAS did, a lot of you may even use it for your home use and stuff, they have a free version, and that filters out a lot of that stuff already. So it'll be nice to at least get it at the server level before it hits everybody. We've had the issues at the town hall before, and it's expensive to, you know, go in afterwards and clean up after it.
So it's $450 a year?
It's $450 for three-year subscription.
For three years?
So three years. It's $500 to do the install, get the software all set up and configured, and get, you know, linked into the exchange server. And then basically, once that's done, you've got something, monitoring that server for the next three years. And honestly, that server after three years, your lifecycle is pretty close to being up on that server another three years anyway. So we'll, you know, when that period is off, we have to plan ahead anyway, and by the time that comes off, we'll probably end up with a different service.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. You're the discussion?
Yeah.
Yes. How many users does that, how many server users licenses that, can we adapt that to anything else, or is it just for the town?
It's just for your town hall exchange server itself, and that's just for monitoring those emails that are assigned to that. One of the nice things about this particular one is that some of the other larger companies, they are charging you per server and per user.
Correct.
This one is per server, so, I mean, if you have 100 users, you're not gonna be charged.
Just the one time for the server.
Correct.
Okay, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess the only thing you have to do is get it in.
Yep.
We're not buying cyber liability insurance.
I reviewed all that stuff before, it actually looks pretty good.
Yeah. We're already headed schedule. We've got a minute to wait. That's all you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda that happens at five minutes past six is a Board of Health Variance Meeting, Public hearing, we've got an eight-year-old avenue. Kevin is our health inspector. Everybody here?
We have the ABRAS cards?
Selectman Jones is the chairman of the Board of Health, so he's gonna officiate at this. Thirty seconds here, two seconds, full time.
It being 6:05, the Board of Health would like to call a meeting to order. Kevin Bernado is attending. Sir, your name is?
Jeff Youngquist.
Jeff Youngquist, and you are the engineer representing eight-year?
I'm representing Hopeback Engineering, I'm the president of Hopeback Engineering. My son is the engineer.
And we have green cards from the, return receipt cards from the city of New Bedford, from the town water department, from Matthew Bivens and Andrew Fontaine. Please make your presentation.
I'll move this over here, I don't wanna, so many people in the crowd. I'll just put it over here. Basically, this is a, we're going to reconstruct a home that's existing on this lot already. It's roughly 1.6 feet, I think it's 1.5 feet from the side yard line. We're gonna move to pick it up and actually, we're gonna reconstruct, put a new home in here approximately the same size, and move it five feet off the property land. And then reconstruct a new septic system, the existing septic system on the home right now is probably on the ground. We don't know where the existing new, the old well is, it's somewhere in this area, but we have no idea where it is. So we did do one perk test up in here, this was good material, sandy material in here. We moved off of here, we went down and digged a second hole in here, and it just turned to junk. So we only have one good hole, and basically, if you dig anymore, you might as well, you're gonna destroy the material that's there anyway. So this is, this is what we, we have the material right in there, we'll, when we do the open hole, we'll verify it. Basically, we're gonna need a ton of variances because it says postage sample lot, all the lots out here, it basically post each stamps. We're not doing the tight tank because the DEP, you know, if you can do it, they'd rather have us put a system in. So this system will fit in here. One of the variances we're gonna need is the, from DEP is we're from a public water supply. We're only 37 feet, I think it's 42 feet from the wetlands, we're basically 37 and 80-some feet here. This pond is 16 feet higher than Long Pond, but there is an outlet, so it's a contributing to the public water supplies because an outlet going across here on Avenue going into the pond. Basically, we're gonna put a new well in here because we don't know where the old one is, and it's, we need a new one, so from this well will be 80 feet, I think from this well, we will be 55, and from the existing well over here will be 53 feet to the system, which is all greater than 50 feet. I've got covered most of the variances that we're gonna report.
What is the size of the lot?
The size of the lot?
Do you have a focus?
Get this house signed here and there. It's 8,276 square feet, .19 acres.
Okay.
Very tiny. This one's tinier. This lot has a tight tank. The other thing is between our system and the foundation of the existing house over there is only 16 feet. But this house is up high enough, it just goes straight up, that we, I mean, it's quite a bit higher than we, her system should be lower than there.
Is it a dug foundation on the other house, or is it?
I've never been, is that a dug foundation out there?
I'm not sure.
But it's up quite a bit higher than our house, the house on our lot. But basically, let's say Long Pond is here, Round Pond is over here, and it's just basically, it's just, there's a house here.
But you're over 50 feet, all the wells, that's the?
Yeah, we're over 50 feet. We tried to put it in there as best we could.
Mr. Bernado, do you have any recommendation on this?
The only thing we're gonna require is a de-restruction and the water analysis when you put it in the well.
Right. Understandable?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take something out of water once we finish this, so don't leave.
Isn't that what you're gonna need?
Thank you. You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. And we're gonna take something out of water here because there's no reason to hold Kevin up. We have a request for someone who put a RV for a three-week period, I guess, three-to-six week period on their parents' land. Is anybody here, Hutchins here? Come right up. Can you identify yourselves?
I'm Scott Hutchins.
So Scott, it's your property?
Yes.
Where this fellow?
Yeah, mom and dad.
Mom and dad are parking the RV. So tell us what you want to do.
Basically, they bought their motorhome after years and years of thinking about buying a motorhome and traveling around the country, and they live on Huron Ave. We just talked about, any of you have been on Huron Ave, there's not much space to put a 40-foot motorhome. We're fortunate enough to have some space on our property where they can park it. So they said, do you want to park your motorhome on the property during the summer while we're home? I said, why not? So we're trying to get some electrical there so they can run the RV to keep it from getting mold built up and stuff like that while they're here over the course of the summer. Every once in a while, grandkids might have a camp out there, it was pretty nice, and that's basically what we're looking to do. So they live on Huron Ave, and beautiful spot, sunset's there, nice, deck's nice, dock's nice. I don't think they want to live in the RV. We love having clothes, but I don't think our driveway is where they want to spend their summers.
I would invite you to play, I mean, it's a very nice motorhome, too. So you just want to park the vehicle there, but plug into a separate service so in case the grandkids come up?
Well, primarily to keep it conditioned so that we don't have mold. You know, the big problem with RVs is that because they're such a contained space, that when they set closed up, they develop mold. And with the electric, I can put it on and it keeps the AC on when it needs to be on, and just keeps the interior part of the RV conditioned.
I would've just plugged it into his service.
Well, he's too far away. Way up ahead of the property.
We didn't want to pull it.
And I didn't want him to pay the bill for it.
Oh, yeah, he's fine.
The meter will go in, and it'll go in my name, and I just...
So basically, nobody's gonna live in it?
No.
Once in a while?
I mean, once in a while, somebody might, the kids might stay.
Okay, but now?
If I get put in the doghouse, I'm not going out in the shed.
So just so for anybody that's watching this, you're not gonna, your bathroom facilities are gonna be at your house?
Self-contained.
Right, but you're not gonna be using it, and you're gonna have to?
No, no. The only thing, the only thing we'll have is the electric, and that's just to keep the AC, you know, without running the giant...
No sewer hookup.
No sewer hookup, no water hookup, just electric.
Well, it's a little bit different then.
It's not living in?
Storing.
Yeah, so that's even easier?
That's easy, I don't have an issue with that. Because we have a bylaw that allows somebody to park a motorhome and use it for up to three weeks, and it could be renewed for another three-week period, but I don't believe, when I'm here, it doesn't fall into that category at all, so you just want this?
So if I get put in the doghouse for three weeks, I gotta come see you?
Well, you know where I live, so what the heck? All right, so I have no issue with this, I don't, but you guys?
I'll make a motion to allow, as long as there is no occupancy of the motorhome for greater than three weeks in a 12-month calendar year, no water hookup and no sewer hookup.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're good.
Thank you.
We'll get back in, the building.
We just need to get the permit for the electric.
Right. I think he's on vacation all week, so maybe you can call him. Sure. Okay, there you go. You've got connections.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Yeah, you're good. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna introduce you all to Selectwoman Pacico, Lisa Pacico, since she works in the school system, and she's very familiar with dealing with children. My kids are 40 and 38, so we're gonna let Lisa handle the next section.
Oh, thank you. Well, actually, this is one of the most favorite parts of being a selectman, is having the children come in and read their essays, and then take part in being a selectman for just a little part of the afternoon or the early evening, to let you guys know what we do on a daily basis and have an appreciation for someday being future leaders in our community. So first, I want to congratulate everybody. I read the essays, they're awesome, as usual, and I'm gonna first call Emma LaHayne to come up and interview her essay. I'm gonna turn around and take a look.
Can we videotape and read it?
Oh, absolutely.
Why I'm Proud of My Community by Emma LaHayne. I'm proud of my community because it's beautiful and clean, everyone is very nice and friendly. Freetown has been known for its forest. The Freetown Forest is used for lots of things like picnicking, sled dog racing, dirt bike riding, and hiking. Freetown is a great place to live in because of all of the big parks and beautiful nature. Freetown has lots of big landmarks like Profile Rock and the Freetown Forest. Freetown is also known for its places to swim, such as Asonet Bay and Long Pond. Another great place is Little Fenway across from our school, where kids play baseball and softball. For all these reasons, this is why I'm proud of my community, Freetown.
You know, we've got some chairs up there, actually, we had four, and one destroyed, so let me get another chair. Why don't you, oh, it's your fault, huh? Why don't you sit down up here, because you people are gonna have some work to do. Thank you.
So, dear Emma LaHayne, congratulations on your well-deserved recognition by the Freetown Elementary School for your outstanding Why I'm Proud of My Community essay. We are very grateful for the time, effort, and thought you put into your work. This level of effort is reflective of your excellent character and your understanding of what it means to live in Freetown. Clearly, you acknowledge that our town is a wonderful community, and you have put value into that by your writing. At this time and in coming years, we are confident that you will demonstrate through your deeds the same love of town and your appreciation for those who serve it. Please accept our most sincere congratulations on this award. You make Freetown very proud. All right, and next, we're gonna have Thomas Smith. Yes, you can go.
I am proud of my community by Thomas Smith. I'm proud of Freetown for many reasons. Freetown is exciting, and its history is pretty cool, too. The Sonnet River is in Freetown, and I like to go kayaking, crabbing, and swimming. Even though the water is a bit murky and cold, I also like to go to Hathaway Park to play on the playground and play soccer with my friends. Freetown has interesting history, which makes it fun to explore. I even explored the Wampanoag Nation Indian Reservation. My sister and I like to climb Profile Rock, which looks like a person's profile, and it's been said that the Indians used to have ceremonies there, too. These are just a few things that make me proud to live in Freetown, and I'm sure you could find many more reasons to live in Freetown if you lived in the Freetown, too.
All right, and next, we're gonna have Thomas. Timothy? Timothy. I was getting confused, I thought they was linked up. Ready? Hold on, Dad's gonna get his car.
I'm proud of my community, Freetown, Massachusetts, and I have lived here my whole life. I love everything about Freetown, but there are three things I am most proud of. I am most proud of Long Pond, the Lakeside Family Festival, and my school, Freetown Elementary. I have lived on Long Pond since I was a little boy. Long Pond is a lake in the town of Freetown, Mass. It was about one mile wide and four miles long. Long Pond has three islands and a town beach. I like to go swimming and ride or jet ski. Another thing I like about living in Freetown is the Lakeside Family Festival. This is a fair that is held on Memorial Day weekend every year. The fair is located at Saint John Newman Church Cathedral Camp in East Freetown. The people at Cathedral Camp started the fair in 1984 to raise money for a new church. Now it is a yearly tradition. I like the Lakeside Family Festival because of the home and I and games. The last thing I am most proud of is my school. Freetown Elementary School was built in September 1950. The teachers are nice and friendly, and the kids are too. The school has two playgrounds, one is for kindergarten and first grade, and one is for second and third grade. I will miss the school when I go to fourth grade. Here, there are so many things to love about my community. Freetown is a great place to live. I hope to go to the Lakeside Family Festival and swim in the pond for the rest of my life, and I hope I will like my school next year as much as I do now.
All right, and last, we have Jamison Moriarty.
I am proud of my community by Jamison Moriarty. I am proud of my community of Freetown, Massachusetts. It's a great place to raise a family because there are lots of nice people, parks, activities, and playgrounds. I love Long Pond because you can go fishing, tubing, swimming, bar skating, and make money. Did you know Long Pond is one of the largest recreational bodies of water in Massachusetts? Freetown's safe forest is a landmark with a lot of history, and it's 5,217 acres in size. Profile Rock is located in the forest. I've enjoyed climbing the rock with my friends. I like the Freetown Central Park because you can play baseball, softball, and have fun. I've played for four years. I hope you enjoy living in Freetown as much as I do.
They're all wonderful essays, and it just reminds us of why we love Freetown so much, and it comes out of their mouths, and, you know, sometimes things we adults take for granted, we can see through their eyes, and I think that's just awesome. But that wouldn't happen without the wonderful teachers that we have, so I really like to take the opportunity to thank the teachers, and if you could just stand so we can give you a round of applause as well. That being said, now it's time for work. You ready for you to do some work?
Grab the shovel.
Got a lot of stuff to think about. Now, you know that we always do the Fourth of July Parade, right? And when you walk, you guys go to the parade and the fireworks? Okay, so when you go down the road and you see like carts full of candy and balloons and things like that, well, they have to ask permission from us whether we should allow them to be able to sell those things. So that's a big decision, what do you think we should do? Do you think we should allow those things? Yeah? And do you think your parents might want to buy some things for you? Yeah, okay. So then, I need a motion, or do you want to, do you want me to do it? All right. To approve a hawkers and pedler's license for the annual fireworks celebration for William Frank, Michael Nicoletti, and Professional Novelty. So I'm gonna say all in favor, and you're gonna either say yes or no. So all in favor?
Yes.
Yes? I have a holdout down the end.
Might be abstaining.
Are you gonna abstain? Do you not want a word on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, all in favor? It's worth it.
All right, so that was the first one, right?
That's all. I did all three of them.
Did all at once? Okay, so now, we've got to sign, and then we have to have all four of these young people come up to sign. Why don't you guys come up here in front here, because you're all gonna have to sign your names, licenses. Plus, it's not over yet. Come up there and sign this. So who wants to go first? Here, you sign your name over here.
Right up top. There you go.
Then go to the next one, sign your name in the same place. Without your signature, these people wouldn't be able to operate on the Fourth of July.
She's gonna make sure it's right up there, right, Emma? Great.
All right, Monica. Sign your name on there, Monica. You still got more work to do after this, too. You're gonna have to sign for the big money that we spent this week. Okay, who's next? Monica. Thank you, Tim.
Great job. You want to go there? You need to go there. Is that three? You have three days.
Oh, you need, no, three.
It's pretty bad with my signatures messier than theirs.
All right, everybody's better, huh? Not you, gotta do it.
Yeah. Tough act of honor.
There you go, you're right.
I didn't know some of the statistics that were quoted, and he's nice. Well, you need speechwriters, you guys are gonna be on call.
As soon as you're done, we have to have them sign the warrants, don't we?
Also, the Fourth of July Parade. We always invite our junior selectmen to march with us in the Fourth of July Parade, so I want to just make sure that we extend that to you as well, that they'll march alongside of us as our junior selectmen for the day. So usually, we have to be there around 9:30, and I'm not sure where we're gonna set up this year, but last year it was stop and shop, I believe. So we'll probably be doing the same thing again. I'll make sure that Ally sends you a notification letting you know, so just make sure that everything's up to date or an email, and then that way we can get in touch with you beforehand. Okay?
How's that sound?
That sounds pretty awesome, right? Throw up candy, you won't be able, we'll save some candy for you, because I know that that's the best part.
Throw one, if you want, throw one.
All right, go ahead.
You didn't say anything derogatory about me not walking. You didn't say anything derogatory about me not walking. I usually write, "I'm too old to walk." Okay, can I have that package of warrants?
Everything down your way.
I don't need all. Just the way I guess. So, here's something else that we do every week. We spend your parents' money and the rest of the taxpayers'. So, these are called warrants. And, uh, what happens is that when somebody has a bill, or they submit it to the town, it gets approved by a different department heads, and then it goes off to our town accountant, who reviews them to make sure the funds are available, number one, to make sure they're legitimate purchases, number two. And then she lists them on a sheet like this. This is called a warrant sheet. Then it goes to the treasurer, and the treasurer's office cuts the check for each one of these. Then it's verified to make sure the check matches, and then they get mailed out. But nothing can get mailed out without the board of selectmen having at least two board members to sign it each, each week. Uh, we have warrants for any type of purchases, like if you went to Walmart and you had to buy something, there'll be, uh, there'll be a check issued. And payroll is the same way. So what we have here is, we've got...
So if you think that Mr. Sadik should be paid, then you sign it. If you don't think that he should be paid, then you don't sign it. And some weeks, I don't wanna sign it, and then some weeks I do sign it.
I have to be nice to him, or she won't sign my pay. Okay, anyway, so listen. This week we paid, we spent a hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and three cents. So that's a lot of money. So, for the, uh...
For the week?
For the week. So...
You guys can initial it.
Initial it, put your initials here, 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 and here. Each one of you put your initials down on that one, and you gotta do the same for this.
She doesn't mind spending money. Nope. Yours, mine.
Does it save us money if they don't sign it?
No, we've already signed it. That's one of the smaller ones. Two altogether. Alright, one more. Are you gonna sign? You're gonna let us get paid, huh? Put your initials down. Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. Now, everybody can get paid.
So we did write, um, a little certificate for each one of the students. Um, and again, I just wanna, on behalf of the board, Mr. Joe's and Mr. Sadik, I just wanna congratulate you. So Timothy? Thomas? Jamison? And girls rule, Emma.
Alright, don't forget the parade.
Alright, you guys are dismissed. Awesome job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you?
How you doing?
Good, really good. I've never seen you. I know.
Here we go.
Smile, boys. Oh, did you wanna see?
Do you mind if that's okay?
Thank you.
I just wanted to get you out of the way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We want you to strike a line. Ready, start?
Back up a little, guys. Guys, back up a little.
Don't be scared. Good job, guys. Tommy.
Smile nicely. Jamison McCoop, yeah. Jamison, give a good smile. Wait, 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 wait. What time? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. One more, one more.
You're gonna be on TV also.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, Fourth of July. It's on the phone.
Five minutes on the third. Here, and it's the flower time?
Yes, that's what I... Yeah, sure, buddy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, thank you. Bye, thank you.
Good night.
See you, bye.
Alright, keep on going. Next thing on the agenda is to, um... I gotta, I gotta go to Sister La... I gotta go to my Sister La's retirement party. She's a teacher, she's retiring.
At what time?
I have to be there for five.
Oh, you're playing a time.
No, 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 I gotta go, I gotta go to Cambridge in all that traffic.
What time is that? What time is Friday?
Friday, two o'clock.
So you can't make it.
I can't make it.
They're only there by three.
You can feel all the tough questions. Alright, the next thing on the, the next thing on the agenda.
Although I do feel a cold coming out.
Wow, do you know this is gonna happen?
I know it's gonna happen. She's gonna bail on me, so it's just me staying there.
There you go. You would have...
The tech by third graders not knowing what to say or do.
There you go.
I'm more afraid of that than police negotiation. And they have guns. The police.
Alright. We'll never get out of here this way.
I'm sweating now. I'm not gonna sleep tonight.
Alright, next thing on the agenda is to approve the, uh, ambulance abatements for the month of May. Uh, the amount of the ambulance abatements is thirty-two thousand, five dollars and fifty-one cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No, we didn't.
Do I do it?
Yeah. I thought we did.
We need to make a motion. No, we did just sit on.
Yeah. You wanna make the official motion?
Okay.
That's not it, though, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I did all three of them.
We're gonna make the official motion. Yeah, we need to make the motion.
Second, the motion, that was me.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now it's official. It's have to be official.
I didn't do my part. I was panicked by the third graders.
Alright, who we got? Cyber liability. That's Jack. Jack's on the, uh, Jack's on the bandwagon.
We, uh, as you know, uh, asked, uh, about some cyber liability insurance and, um, have a quote from a local, uh, company that, um, provides this type of insurance. That we floated it by our IT person, Mr. Stockwell, who was here earlier this evening. Uh, and he concurs that, uh, we're in a very litigious environment and, uh, bad things happen frequently in terms of people, uh, using, uh, the, uh, systems available to them to mess things up. And having this type of insurance is a necessity at this point in time. It's not that expensive. It's, uh, uh, it's under five thousand dollars for the, for the year. And, um, I would certainly recommend that the board approve and sign the agreement to buy this insurance.
Is this different than the one, the other one that we just purchased?
What was that? What we just, we did with Charlie?
No, not that. No, no, no. We just purchased, um, other insurance, remember?
I think we talked about this once before. Now we're taking action on this.
One was, uh...
The one for the police and fire, right?
The police did their own.
Yeah, no, it wasn't that. It was, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, one was for a million dollar coverage. The other one was for up to a million, I think. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We are, didn't we just assign it?
No, we, yeah.
This is just assigned it.
That's right.
'Cause we already purchased it. We're already, we've already agreed to it. Now it's just a sign thing, okay? I thought it was online.
Where's the, uh, the sign?
The charge.
What did I do?
It's in here? Yeah, oh, oh, that there, okay.
Oh, I thought that was his program. That's for the liability insurance, though.
Yes.
So you need a motion to endorse?
Yeah.
Motion to endorse.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, we, we, I know we...
Oh, you did? Oh, everybody signed it. Alright, confusing. There you go. Alright, next thing on the agenda. The one that was signed is, Mr. Daly? Come on up. Come on up.
Up here?
Sure. I thought that might be you.
It's me. There aren't that many people left here, so...
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Yes, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
You wanna fill the board in?
I, well, I understand that council reviewed that paperwork that I sent you and apparently thought it wasn't doable for our town. So basically, I just came here to, first of all, thank you for, um, having it checked out. And the second reason I came was to see if there was any specific reason given as to why that wouldn't work for our town.
Can read it right there. Basically, uh, whenever we pass a ordinance in the town, it has to be reviewed by the secretary, uh, by the Attorney General. And, uh, who'd have probably bounced back to us, there is sufficient laws on the books now to, uh, in essence, protect people.
Oh, okay. That's good news, yeah.
It depends on how well you apply the law, I guess.
Right. Okay, I didn't realize that. Great.
Okay.
I'm happy. I'm happy, but I do thank you very much. I really appreciate you checking into it. And, um, thank you all, and thank you for the correspondence, too.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Alright, next thing. Approve a donation of approximately fifty-four acres of land. Donated, gonna be donated to the town of Free Town Conservation from an organization called Free Town Land Company. It's on Assessors Map two twenty-eight, Lot nine point oh six, and Assessors Map two twenty-nine, Lot eleven. And that is up off of Christopher Drive, which is off of Marie's Way, I believe, off of Chase Road.
Yeah, it's in the Holly Ridge subdivision.
So, we wanna accept it?
Yeah, the conservation, uh...
Recommended it.
Recommended it. So, um, in, in respect of that, um, I'll make a motion to approve the gift of the fifty-four acres of land in the Holly Ridge subdivision off of Chase Road, map two twenty-eight, Lot nine oh six, twenty-nine point ten acres, and map two two nine, Lot eleven, twenty-four point nine acres.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if anybody wants to know, that property, that, uh, that property, which is about fifty, fifty-four acres, only, uh, got us about thirty-five hundred dollars a year in taxes, so we can put it to good use for people of Free Town. Alright, that's done. Now we'll turn it over to Lisa Pacheco, who is the chairman of...
Anything on the board to help?
Oh, we already did, all right.
You already did.
No, but anything else? Anything up with mosquitoes yet or anything?
Nothing yet, unfortunately.
Alright. Any Zika virus updates?
Not as of yet.
Well, I'm gonna ask you another question.
It was Zika related.
How's the caterpillar population?
Unfortunately, Mr. Barado hasn't given me the current population notes, but I believe he's counting as we speak.
I'm waiting for her, uh, for a question about how high is Long Pond.
That's a good question.
Now, a couple of years ago, Chuck was kind enough to drill a hole and put in a pipe that, I guess, Lee Baumgau and the Mark bought for the height. And periodically I'd go in there and take a look. And I can tell you that it actually is pretty down low.
Low. We haven't had a lot of rain.
We are, we are deficient on rain.
Yes, we are.
The Fire Marshal's not letting the bonfire this year because of the rain situation, how dry we are.
Yeah, we're very dry.
It's, can we just say that, that, that it's a safety concern to have that bonfire with the lack of rainfall that we've had? And can you just reiterate that it was...
It's not the chief's decision.
It's not the chief's decision.
Massachusetts State Police, uh, the Fire Marshal's office has made the decision not to allow the open fire burning for the bonfire.
There are some citizens that are upset about...
For the, the fourth?
Yes.
Thirty July.
Um, there are citizens, some citizens that are upset about it. And I just, it's one of those things that, you know, we have to take, uh, safety into consideration. And, um, it came down from the Fire Marshal, so just, thanks for bringing that up.
Unfortunately, it's not his decision.
No.
It's out of his hands.
Right. Okay, so, um, I have a letter here from Carlton Abbott to, uh, request that Nicholas Drinkwine be hired as a Reserve One Police Officer at a rate of sixteen eighty-six.
Does he have to adopt you? Does he have to adopt you to get this fight?
Not me.
That's not a ask.
I know.
Drinkwine, that's a great name.
I'm my favorite name.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, all in favor? Bye.
Carlton, is he the fellow that works for, uh, Sherwood?
Yes.
He's a great guy. He's a nice guy.
Okay, let's see. You're that, we're, we're that way now. Next thing is, uh, old business, new business. We don't talk about anything else on, on the personnel, right? So we go to business. July eleventh. That's not really true, right? We got, we got one next week, six twenty.
We have the twenty, yeah.
Yeah, we got the twenty, it's been there. So, on the old business where it says water agreement, on six twenty, we have a meeting to talk about that.
Okay.
Alright, and new business.
Are we doing the personnel signings that time, too, on the twenty?
Yes.
The appointments?
The appointments. We don't actually have to sign, but we have to do the appointments.
Yeah, we gotta sign, too.
You can sign beforehand, but, yeah, it, it's long.
Bring your stamp.
Well, it's gonna be a long meeting, depending on how long Water Commissioners are.
But I think it's gonna take a little while.
I thought you said sign it. And we have late entry.
Building committee tomorrow, uh, Wednesday.
Yes, chairman. Maybe we need to do something. Take a vote. Isn't technology wonderful?
Yeah, it's late entry.
We get these, uh, well, it's on the agenda.
Maybe, um, we can put on this agenda.
Well, we can, it's on the agenda.
Oh, it is on.
But we already, okay.
Let's, let's just do as, and say it's just...
Alright, um, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of John Pena that he paid for his unused vacation days as a result of his inability to use them prior to the end of the fiscal year due to his attendance at the full-time police academy. Um, and since he is a student officer and falls under the personnel bylaw and not under the, um, CBA.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you for the late arrival. At least we had it on the agenda.
Yeah, just happened to see.
Okay, and, I guess, that's it?
That's it.
Ten oh seven.
Thank the Lord.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Go ahead, you second it. All in favor? Aye. Alright.